Okay, we're now recording, folks. I'll go ahead and call the Sherwood School Board to order for a work session for February 3rd on reopening. Apologies if you tried to watch this live, we had some technical issues and so we're recording and we'll post this as soon after the meeting as we're able to. With that, I will go ahead and turn things over to Dr. Cordy.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Directors. We will start off our work session this evening with Mr. Rose giving an update on vaccines and that process, along with metrics and case rates. Mr. Rose?
Thank you Chair Allen, Dr. Cordy, members of the board. If you'll give me a moment, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen so we can see my presentation. As you know from previous conversations, we are working with a regional collaboration of ESD's healthcare providers, the county public health organizations, as well as the Oregon Health Authority. Thanks to our regional partners, we've stood up, or I should say they've stood up, a regional vaccine clinic at the Oregon Convention Center. I would say initially, this whole situation was pretty fluid. I'm glad to report that now, after a week or so, we've kind of settled down pretty significantly. I want to share with you just a little bit of reminder of the first staff survey that we did a few weeks ago, and of the respondents, just how many were from each of the two, or each of the classified and certified administration and other groups. And then also to show you or remind you that at that point, we had just shy of 87% of our staff that intended to get the vaccine, which was frankly very high, and I was very happy to see that. The latest information is that Wave 1, which is our kindergarten and first grade teachers and the support staff going with that, including bus drivers, food services, custodians, those folks, that is open and those people have been getting appointments and even some have been getting shots. Wave 2 opened on Monday and those folks are now in the queue and getting appointments as well. The slots for them to actually get shots is not yet, the date has not yet approached us. The other piece that we have learned is that the folks who are 80 years old and older are becoming eligible and so that will also be a part of the convention center and the vaccine clinics that are operating throughout our area. One big piece that I'm kind of excited about is the first chatbot that we talked, chatbot that we talked about last week, where folks go on to the OHA website and determine their eligibility through a, what they call an AI interface, an artificial intelligence interface, has now been translated to Spanish. And I'm not sure it's live at the moment, but it was supposed to be fairly quickly, so that's great to reach more of our community as well. And then a new piece also is that the districts are assisting with staffing some at the convention center. And so we have folks from some of the districts around us who have kind of been assigned to that location to do different tasks. That will actually start on this coming Monday, I believe, and go for about four weeks. And so districts are trying to help out where we can, in addition to just getting our staff vaccinated, which is fantastic. And then recently, as of yesterday, we sent out a quick survey to our staff who were in Wave 1 and Wave 2 to kind of find out how they've been doing in terms of getting an appointment and also the shots if they've been able to. And so I'd like to take a few slides here and go through some of that data with you. So this first one, I just wanted to draw your attention to, is we asked again what group they were, what employee group they were part of. As you can see, the numbers have, the numbers of classified in this group is actually quite a bit higher than it is across the district. And that's partly because we had our bus drivers, custodians, as well as food services, which are all in the classified group in Wave 1. We had 125 classified folks self-identified and 103 certified, and then the balance of the 241 responses was administration and other. Previously, we were working on email list, which would have given me the ability to actually count how many people were in each of the subsets. And if you recall, originally, we were talking about a group of 10%, and then another group of 10%, and then four groups of 20%. When we went to the wave system as kind of provided to us, it was expected to kind of be roughly 25% in each of the groups. And so not being able to count the actual emails, I wasn't exactly sure how many folks would be in each of those four waves. And so we asked people to self-identify. Were they in Wave 1 or were they in Wave 2? Wave 1 ended up being about 78% or 188 of our respondents, and Wave 2 is just 53. So less than a quarter was in Wave 2. We do expect Wave 3 to be kind of similar to Wave 2 because it's our 6th through 8th grade staff. And then again, Wave 4 will likely be one of our largest because it starts to include our district office staff, in addition to all the high school staff, substitutes, and coaches fall into that wave as well. Here is a kind of interesting data point for me, because we asked the same question in that previous survey, and if you recall, we had just shy of 87% that wanted to get the vaccine. With this group, that percentage has actually gone up to 92.5%. So we, of the 241 folks, we have 223 that plan to get it. And I don't know if that increase is a shifting in attitudes about the vaccine as it's been ruled out, or if this group was just hired to begin with because we didn't break it down by this group in the previous survey. If they answered no, they were not interested in getting the survey, this was the last question for them. And the remaining ones are the folks who actually plan to get the survey. Sorry. Thank you. Vaccine. I probably been doing that all night. Of the 223 who wished to get the vaccine, 215 were able to do so. While I was kind of pleasantly surprised that the rate was that high, I wish it had been 100%. But having said that, I don't know the reason for the eight folks who did not get an appointment. And it could be, it could be a systems issue that they just couldn't make it through the system, or it could be that they don't have time within their own schedule to make it happen. At this point, those eight weren't sure why they haven't been successful. Since this is an anonymous survey, we're also not able to follow up with them and say, hey, what happened? And is it something we can assist with or, you know, get our healthcare providers to help with? And then this is an interesting question, and not knowing what the federal government's distribution supply is, I really had no idea what the results would be or what to expect. But we've had 144 staff members receive at least their first dose, and 135 of those were the Pfizer vaccine, and just nine had received Moderna's. So our expected timeline is that Wave 1 and Wave 2 folks are currently able to get appointments. And hopefully, we can pick up those eight that haven't had, haven't been successful in getting an appointment. The vaccinations for Wave 2 starts on Sunday, the 7th, with the bulk of appointments beginning the 10th. And I expect the next round of Wave, or the next round of appointments for Wave 3 to be released fairly soon. And those will likely be for the remaining slots still in Wave 2, and then again, for the dates of the February 17th through the 23rd. I do expect Wave 4 to be our largest, and so we're waiting to see kind of what Wave 4 timeline looks like. But at this point, we don't have any projection of either when the appointments will be open, or what dates those appointments will be for. So I want to go back for just a moment to our metrics. You've seen this slide previously. And for us, the row that matters is that first one, where it says, count each case rate per 100,000 people over 14 days. And as you recall, to open onsite and hybrid for elementary, it has to be below 350,000, or 350 cases per 100,000. And then to consider opening onsite and hybrid for middle and high, we have to be below 200 cases per 100,000. With also the added piece that we have to be able to show at K5, that we've been successful in opening, and that we've not had transmission of the COVID-19 virus within the school environment. And we have to show that first at K5 and then at 6A before we can open high school. So kind of in summary, elementary, less than 350 cases per 100,000. We are currently below that. At middle school and high school, it has to be 200 cases per 100,000 or less. And that, again, that demonstrated ability to limit spread. We've partially met that in that this week, our case rate was 184.2 cases per 100,000. But we have not yet obviously demonstrated that students can be back K5 successfully, successfully without spreading the disease. Our next steps are pretty simple. We're waiting on the announcement of scheduling for Wave 3. Again, I think that will be quite soon. And then waiting for guidance and timing from regional partners on Wave 4. I do believe we will do another survey here in the next few weeks to see how the Wave 3 and Wave 4 go in terms of getting appointments. And I'd be happy to take any questions anybody has.
Just to be really clear, what it looks like based on the numbers is not only have Wave 1 support staff in K1 had the opportunity to get vaccinated, it looks like the large majority of those who plan to get vaccinated have been vaccinated. Is that right?
That is correct.
And then just the other, the other point is that knowing a little bit about how the vaccine distribution works, the second doses are there for all those folks, and usually, they should have had the opportunity to schedule the second dose at, right at the, at the convention center. So there shouldn't be any question about, you know, is someone going to have the second dose available, right?
That is correct. Actually, we had a discussion about this this morning. The staff there at the convention center are walking around as people have the 15-minute waiting period after getting the shot before they're able to leave, and they're scheduling in their in-person. Staff don't have to have a phone with them, they don't have to have a computer with them. People are walking around helping them through that process.
Great, thanks. Other questions?
For the folks at home, could you remind us what the timeframe is for, because most of our people have had Pfizer, what the timeline is for the second dose?
With the Pfizer vaccine, it's three weeks, 21 days.
Other questions? All right, forward to me. So new piece of information, and we have a letter from Kyler Pace and Nancy Stauffer with the Sherwood Education Association. I'll go ahead and read the letter into the record. Dear Chair Allen and Board of Directors, good evening. In the days following last week's special work session, we have received multiple letters and emails, each with varying opinions around reopening to in-person instruction. As of Monday, all our licensed staff have had the opportunity to provide input via confidential surveys. The secondary results are consistent with what we shared with you last week. The majority of our licensed staff want to return to in-person after they have had two COVID-19 vaccinations, plus the recommended wait time to build immunity. On behalf of the licensed educators in Sherwood, we are formally asking you to reconsider a portion of the reopening conditions. We ask that the Sherwood School District bring students back to hybrid instruction after our staff have had access to both doses plus wait time, based on the immunization waves. Further, we ask that limited in-person instruction, LIPPY, continue at the secondary level and that we begin to implement LIPPY at the elementary level as soon as possible. We value the collaborative relationship our association has had with the school board over the last 20 years, and we look forward to a continuation of this. Most sincerely, Kyler Pace and Nancy Stauffer. So I think now we've got a little bit of opportunity to kind of discuss where, where we think we are. I'll, I'll jump in maybe and, and kind of frame things up a little bit. While I firmly believe that the Ready School Safe Learners Guidance is guidance that is designed to work in the absence of a vaccine at all, and actually is in excess of the kinds of conditions that people are working today in, in terms of, you know, non-hospital healthcare, personal services, those kinds of things, in that all these tools work in terms of masks and distancing and hand washing and all that. I also hear loud and clear where, where our, where our staff are. And, and I, you know, I could probably argue all day long that, that they could be somewhere different, but that's, that's where they are, and I think we have to respect and honor that. I'm super pleased that the vaccination process at the convention center appears to be working really, really well. I'm really pleased that so many people, A, want the vaccine, because in other parts of the state, that's a, that's a question, and B, are getting the vaccine. And, and so, like I say, while I could argue other, other places to be, I think, if we, if we, if we agree to this, this schedule, it looks like we should be able to get kids in K1 back in our buildings on, on March 8th, and then move through each successive wave of grades as those staff have the opportunity to get, to get vaccinated. The one thing I do think is worth pointing out is that we're talking in terms of two doses in, in two weeks, because that's the vaccines that are out there right now. They're both two-dose vaccine. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is rumored to be close to being submitted to FDA for authorization, and it's a one-dose vaccine. So when we actually turn this into MOU language, I think we need to, you know, kind of focus on, on what FDA and CDC say about vaccines, rather than get hung up on two doses when that's not necessarily what, you know, what, what's available out there. But, but beyond that, I'm at a place where I'm willing to, to go down this path and, and have staff work toward a plan to bring kids back in our buildings on the, on the 8th at K1. Other thoughts? Sue?
I guess I would, yeah, this is Sue. I, I would add, I'm also encouraged that so many of the staff that are eligible have gotten the vaccine so quickly. That just gets us that much closer to getting students back into in-person learning, and I can't wait for that, that process to start happening, like so many of you. So I'm really excited that we can bring our youngest learners in and continue to expand that. You know, the sooner the better. I talked about it multiple times, that we just can't get these, these days, weeks, any of this time back. So, so there, there is no time to waste. I'm also really encouraged there could be a vaccine that, that is only one dose, or, you know, that could, that could really help our timeline as well to get the older students back and do what we can to, to get them in, in buildings as well. So really encourage that we're able to, to kind of come to a good place and do everything we can to get students back in buildings and, and learning in person.
Other thoughts?
I'll just say, I just quite concur with, with you and Sue said. I think we've done a lot of work over the last seven months, making sure our buildings are safe, making sure we have processes ready to go, make sure the staff and the, and the kids are safe once they come back into our buildings. I must admit, I was a little surprised when I heard that 60% of our teachers were, were not comfortable coming back. But I guess when I, when I look back on it, we did just kind of go through a whole, you know, a winner-break surge of all these cases coming in. There was a giant, seemingly giant jump in the recommended levels from 200 to 350. And then you heard the variance coming out. So, I mean, if you look at the news, I can see how there would be some, some nervousness around that. And I, and I do understand that. And I think it just kind of takes some time to kind of process this information, because this was pretty much everything we're talking about here, all came out in the last two or three weeks. So with that said, I, I think we've, we've done what we needed to do. I think this is a, I think you've kind of said this all along, that this is a community effort. It, it requires, you know, diligence by our students, by our teachers, by our staff, by district office, by our community, by the, you know, the greater Washington County general public to, to get these numbers down and keep them down. The insane amount of work that's been done by our healthcare system to get these, our education staff vaccinated so we can get back. So if, if this is what it takes to get back, I'm, I'm good.
Thanks. Jessica?
Yeah, thanks, Pat. I, I've been doing a lot of thinking about this over the last week. I know we all have. And it's made me think a lot about privilege. We've got, we are so privileged to be in this district, or high-quality district with amazing teachers and staff. We've got a great administration leading this district. We're lucky and privileged to be in a state that made decisions early to keep case rates down and hospitalizations down. We're lucky to live in a state where this governor has been, taken lots of arrows for prioritizing education. It's a privilege that our educators are going to be able to get vaccines ahead of others in this state. And that's a, that's a privilege that comes with a burden, because we know that that wasn't necessarily asked for. There are expectations that come with that. And not everyone in our community has been kind about assumptions about that privilege. I'm, I'm reminded that we live in a community where there are assumptions that because there are middle and upper-income folks here, that they can all afford tutors, when we know that is not true for many students. I also know that we live in a district where, for some, this new way of learning has actually worked better for some kids than others. And as I think about all of this, and the mountain of emails that come into my inbox, which I may not respond, but I read every single one of them, I want folks to know, I think, it's at the moment really hard to walk in somebody else's shoes. We're real, we're real stuck in our own right now, and we see the world and assume the world is entirely as we see it. And it's sometimes really hard to think about a student who lives out of their car, or a student who is really struggling. If you've got kindergarteners or middle schoolers, it's hard to think about seniors and their last year in school, and what this last moment of education feels like to them. If you have high schoolers, it's really hard to think about what it's like to be back in kindergarten, and me imagining what it's like to have kindergarteners trying to learn on Zoom. And I just, for all of those people that are out there listening to this now, that are going to turn to their computer in five minutes and send us an email, which we welcome, and you're welcome to do, and Mr. Rose and Ms. Andrea will do a great job of reading those comments when we have a board meeting next week. So please feel free to send your comments, we welcome them. Take a moment as you're writing that email and think about being in somebody else's shoes. Try and be kind. For some of you, this is going to be moving this direction. I, I want to associate myself with the comments of my, my fellow board members. This, this sometimes feels longer than it should be. For some of you, this will be the idea of waiting until March 8th for kindergarten is a century from now, and it's way too long. And for others, this is going to feel like we're being irresponsible and we're moving too fast. And I think we need to remember that for some kids, it is too long. And that's why I'm really glad to hear that LIPPY is part of this, about starting elementary LIPPY right now, because that, that needs to happen. For some kids, it is too long. And for others, we're going to have to, we're going to have to hang in there and trust the science. Trust the science that tells us that vaccines work. Also trusting the science that the Ready School Safe Learners is built on, which is some of the most advanced regulations around school safety that exists in the country, on top of a state that already has some of the lowest infection rates in the country. That doesn't mean that there is 100% safe environment ever. Sending your kids to school before COVID meant that they could catch the flu or something else. For God's sake, if you knew it was in a hot dog, you'd never eat that again. I mean, it just, there's, the world, the world is not without risk. And we are committed to doing things to mitigate those risks, but we also have to move forward, knowing that these are moments and days and weeks that you can't get back. They're different. And I think we've done the very best we can, and that is credit to teachers and classified and the administrators I'm looking at now. But we've got a lot more to do, and we can do better. And we need to do this together. We need to try and be kind. We try and listen, and we need to model best behavior for our kids, because it doesn't make it better for them. If, if we're all just negative together, everyone's last nerve is exposed. So we need to be kind. And I'm just begging that of the community, to, to give us grace, to recognize the education. As Eric said, this is a community effort. This is only something we can do together. It's only something we can do if our teachers come back. If our students come back. If we're careful with each other and understand that if, if we push too far and too fast, and we have teachers saying, you know, I'm not going to take that risk, and I'm going to go out on leave, what that means is a classroom full of students that have built a relationship with that teacher loses that teacher for the rest of the year. And that's incredibly disruptive. My hope and prayer is that in doing this together, as hard as it is, as imperfect as it is, that we buy trust with the community. For those that are concerned that it's too fast, that we give enough time for people to feel like it's safer, and we can continue to see case rates fall. And for those that are concerned it's not enough, to know that if this is what is possible for your kid to maintain their teacher this year, that the, that the wait is worth it. And we're going to get those kids in who need the most help right now, so we can meet those needs. And I, my heart's been heavy with this for quite a while, and I am talking an awful lot, and that should be pretty obvious to everybody, but I, I just feel like there's a lot of things that we need to just say out loud. And these are the ones that have been on my heart. So thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
The main thing I want to say is a comment to the community. I think there's going to be efforts, you know, it, it has been very hard on our seniors with our, our senior rep being here. And, you know, for the community, we look for, we need to look for opportunities to recognize them and say that we are proud of them for all the work that they have done and the things that they have accomplished. This is a year unlike any other, and even, even more than last year. So far, they haven't been in their schools. Hopefully, we will get them back. But as a community, we really need to recognize them and show them our support.
Thanks. Ainsley?
I just want to say thank you for that. That's really nice. I like all of the ideas and everything you guys have said. And I, as I do every meeting, I agree with Sue completely in that if this is time that we don't get back. And so the more we can work on it, the better it will be. And I know Ms. Baron did a really good job of hosting the senior meeting. It was crazy, and people were not being respectful. So I apologize so much to you. But I'm very grateful that you put your But I'm very grateful that you put yourself out there and you let us, not us, I, I do not resonate with what they said. It was bad because it was terrible. But they, you allowed us to say what we wanted and that was really, really cool of you. But I just, there's so many different opinions and I know that there are some so far left and so far right and it's, you can't please everyone. But it's just hard to. Think about because you want everyone to go to school, but then there's some kids who just don't want to go to school. And so you have a cloud campus, but then they don't want to do cloud campus. If there's going to be kids in the school and then everything is just so hard. So I am so grateful for you guys and trying to find a perfect balance. And help everybody. Yeah, I am very happy to be a part of this. And I think that having the. Eighth grade, no, hmm, the elementary school go first is a great idea. That's, that's perfect. But again, if we could maybe with the fifth graders, since we are not all in the same building. If the seniors can be pushed in just little by little, like maybe. I don't know, like a hundred one day, a hundred the next day, a hundred the next day, like just one day a week, however that would work. Or maybe. Like put all of the high school staff to see how that works. Just put them in the building and get them ready. And then see how that goes and then bring us in like. I know you guys are working so hard and I'm so grateful, but I'm just throwing it out there and just want you to keep in mind like. This is all we have. So as, as much as we try, as long as we try.
Great. Thanks, Ainsley. I think I observed maybe four weeks or so ago that if you wanted to come to a place to make decisions that made everybody happy, this was not your meeting. And I, I think we're still in that place, but, but I think what I hear is, yes, go ahead.
If I can, I, I, I really. I, I really think it's important because I, I, I don't think that if you were to ask any of the, of the board members here. That we wouldn't want to do exactly what Ainsley just said. But I think that there are some structural issues and I, I think it would be helpful to put those on the record. Specifically what Ready School Safe Learner says about the order in which we have to bring people back. I think it would be very helpful for the public to understand that the things that get in the way of that. Relative to that, that timeframe. And so I don't know whether to take that now or take that in a few minutes, but I don't, I, I want to be. Really clear that. It, it's not a, a lack of innovation desire on the part of the board. It's. Part of what we're required to follow that is preventing that.
Yeah, I can actually speak to that a, a little bit. We're driven by two things. One is the wave schedule of vaccinations, which don't get to high school. And other upper-grade teachers until the fourth wave. And the other is that the Ready School Safe Learners Guidance, if we're in that yellow category that, that Mr. Rose put up earlier. Basically calls for you to add grade by grade from youngest to oldest because the risk of infection goes up the older. Kids are is what the, what the science basically says. And so what you, what you need to do is kind of go grade by grade and see how things are going. What we really know is that, is that spread in schools, if it happens, is reflective of spread in the wider community. And that's why. The case rates coming down and being where it looks like they're going to be is really encouraging. But, but you're right, those two things sort of. Really have to point you in the direction of, of go carefully, go grade by grade and go as vaccinations occur.
This is not a, a lack of desire on our part. I just want to be super clear for that for you, Ainsley, to know that. If we could wave a magic wand and do that tomorrow, that that would be, you know, our desire, but we've got, we're, we have got regulation we're required to follow and for people that are listening. To know that that's, that's reality too, so that it is not a lack of creativity on our part. It is a. It is a set of regulation which we have to follow.
Yeah. So here's where I think, here's where I think we are. I think, I think we're all very encouraged by the fact that there is now basically a track going on to get all staff who want to be vaccinated, vaccinated. Those appear to be overwhelmingly Pfizer vaccines, which is good because it's a week later or a week shorter period to wait for, for a booster. That we're, that we're committed to the. The FDA recommended, FDA recommended shots, which right now is two shots in, in two weeks. Could change if there's a one-dose shot or other circumstances that, that occur. That what we want to be able to do then is as waves complete, that we start moving staff into our buildings and they work from, they work from our buildings. Again, and that we bring kids back as that vaccination schedule allows. And that right now, we're based on what we think we know, we're shooting for K one, being able to come back in our buildings on March eighth. Does that sound? Sound like where we're at?
Yes.
So Dr. Cordy, could you and staff talk a little bit through what it'll look like to basically build a resolution to bring back for us to vote on at our next meeting and, and what the, what everything looks like around building that?
You bet. So, so next week for our board meeting, we'll bring back a set of recommendations that will include dates. We've talked a lot about March eighth for K one. We'll build off of that accordingly. What I'd like right now is for Mr. Bennett to share just what that can look like in a, in a, in a general way, just to, to get people thinking about that, knowing that that's. Being much more specific will be a part of the board action and the packet that's presented next week. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Dr. Cordy, Board of Directors. So next week, we'll bring back, we'll take a good look at the vaccine data and make sure where we are. We'll bring back some recommended dates to open. Targeting March eighth for K one and shortly thereafter, bringing back grades two through five, depending on how that vaccination, vaccination wave goes. And then we'll start looking at middle school and see how wave three and wave four goes and look at middle and high school. And we'll bring you back the firmest dates we can based on what we know at that time. And so. The other thing we'll talk about too is just the transition week and that schedule we've talked about a couple of times. We'll bring back a firm recommendation. For that as well, for you to consider.
Additionally, while that's happening, we'll continue to work with SEA on the MOU that is really focusing on the health and safety pieces that we want to make sure intend to. Within the MOU.
Great. Any questions? Yeah, Jessica.
It'd be great if, I don't know if this is at all possible or if it's more appropriate to wait till next week to have a firmer conversation about what Lippi might look like at the elementary level. And how. Students will be identified for that, how all of that's going to work. But it'd be great to hear more about that. And if it's more appropriate to wait till next week, that's fine too.
You bet. Thank you for that. I think we, we've got all of our building principals joining us this evening. And so I'd like to. Turn it over to them and invite you to talk about what that work is looking like.
Thank you, Dr. Cordy, Board of Directors. My colleagues on my end, I, I might speak up on their behalf as well. We, we were. We have plans that were largely in place. And an anticipated return after the new year. And so as we return to this notion of, of getting some of our neediest children back into school. We, we aren't starting from scratch. We have a little bit of work to do to dust those off. We want to maybe resurvey our staff, for example, to find out who exactly, you know. Might be in a position to be able to come back and support us in that effort. We, in terms of who the children are, we have a pretty good idea at this point. We've been tracking that information through. A process we have in our schools and. And so we don't think it'll take us terribly long to get there. And so that, you know, I hope that provides some hope. Thank you for asking, Director Adamson. I appreciate that.
Other questions? All right. So back here next week for a regular meeting, we will take action at that meeting to implement. Implement plans based on recommendations from staff. I suspect, we'll talk about it next time, but I suspect we should still plan on probably a weekly check-in as we go, as we go through this process. We'll decide that for sure next week. There, is there anything else for the general good? If not, I'll adjourn the work session. Thanks, everybody.